And it's about 7:00 PM. I don't know how to watch, but it's about 7:00 PM. And we're going to continue with the budget. And so the goal tonight is to review, finalize our changes to the budget, understanding that health insurance, we won't be able to finally resolve for a few weeks. And then discuss the warrant articles that we can anticipate discussing further. We have a few weeks on the warrant articles to finalize those before they go, before they have to be done by, March 11. If we have any bonding articles that we might need to do, they need to be done by a few weeks before that because we have to have special hearings and stuff like that. And I had talked a little bit with you about three things. The budget, the warrant articles, and something related to those too. Making sure we did this. Well, it'll probably come up.
Yeah, I'll run through this. At some point, one of us will weigh in.
So we got a recap of where we're at in terms of changes to the budget. Thank you, Don, for doing that. We also got a list of what we have not discussed yet. So I'm going to start with that as our agenda. Everybody see that?
Yes.
It starts with direct assistance. So let's go on to direct assistance. Does anybody have any changes for direct assistance? I can't imagine how Congress does this. Trying to remember what I did. I personally had no suggested changes.
It's really out of our control, kind of, you know.
The only thing we can control is salaries, but we kind of did that last night.
Yeah.
We discussed, of course, in the plan, it kept it the same way it is and provided some direction about trying to manage the office availability.
The only thing I see on this.
I think, I think we should speak up, but I have no idea.
The only thing I see on this is what we budgeted for direct assistance, food, page 12. You put water. We actually went down $1,300. With the economy the way it is, I would like, I think we should see, get that back up to the $4,300 we budgeted last year. I know we really don't want to go in the up direction on this, but I think this is one of the items that we may need to go up on.
Is there anybody else? Was there anybody else thinking? Last, the previous, '05, '06 was 3776 expenditures, budgeted $4,600. Last year was expenditures of $2,500 and budget of $43,000. The proposal was for $4,600 and the town administration cut it to $4,300 and it's been cut again this year, probably $3,000.
And our actuals to later, $632, so halfway.
I don't know, do you want to, you know, we talked, if there's any time to get it worse? So I'm just wondering if we're, like, coming into the six months that food is counted.
You have no idea on holidays.
Just this one, just before the holidays, so it could be higher.
There could be some.
I'd recommend that we keep it at three.
With prices of everything going up, especially food, I think 3,000 is just a little bit low for this. Rather than have them go do a deficit, I think we ought to budget up for it. Worst case scenario, we're going to have a surplus.
I'd prefer to keep it where it's at. How about Roseanne and Mike? What are your thoughts?
I'd keep it where it's at.
I'd like to see it go up because I think we're going to need it. If you've watched Channel 46 or on the last couple of days.
What's 46?
The stock market and stuff, it's like unbelievable. I have no stocks.
I don't have cable.
But it's scary. It is scary.
So right now, there's three councilors who straw pull or saying, no, keep it where it's at. And there's two that like.
Now, what would happen if, if we needed more?
Well, I mean, it's the, within the Department of Direct Assistance, they can change where the money gets spent.
Okay.
If they wanted to.
They can just re-alc.
If they wanted to change money from Public Works to Direct Systems, he would have to, have to bring it to our attention and say.
All right.
Some of it, we're going to ask, we'd have to statuage it over. Any other suggestions? All right. Assessing. For assessing.
Andy, are you getting through it?
Yeah, Matt has some suggestions, James. So let's see what his, who's got a yellow piece of paper.
A handy?
Oh, yeah. Email it ahead, we'll pick it up. He wants to continue utilizing the staff person that's working with him as a part-time secretary. Continue working, and have her also continue working with Water and Sewer. It's not going to change. He would like to, he's requesting additional funds for part-time salary, might have to hire someone for aid with verification process. So he wants the part-time, instead of being zero, it would be $10,000, which would be about.
Overall, he's, he's letting it go down. He took those changes in $6,316.
From what was proposed by you?
From what's being proposed.
Correct.
From the town administrator.
So when I did the math for the first one, I was proposing $86,733 because I took out the 18,160 part-timer. So am I missing something that he's at 88,573?
Yeah, we were told that, we did, I think what Jen is saying, I did the same thing. 36,316 is the full-time salary of Ulenberg. So you cut that in half, it's 18,158. So you add that to the base salary for 68,573, and you get the number Jen said.
86,731.
I have the, Amy's way would be 68,573. Part-time, Ulenberg is 18,158.
So together, that's, Jen, what's that number again?
86,731.
So what he's done is he doubled the fact that it's 36. So if you kept Ulenberg at, at her rate, it would be 68,573 plus 18,158, or 86,731.
731.
731.
Yeah.
So then, then we can't put 86,731 instead of 88,573?
Say it again?
He's suggesting that we put in that line item, 88,573 according to his letter.
Yeah.
But you just confirmed my math at 86,731.
Yep. That's what I'm looking at, the paperwork that Don had given, where all the weights were.
Okay. All right, so.
That's my recommendation.
Was it everybody, what's everybody's thoughts about that? I agree that we should not go with the proposal to make the part-time person, the person who's full-time, when half the time assessing, go full-time assessing at this time.
Right.
Yes. Mike, you on the same page?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so this line, the first one on page 14 will be now 86,731.
Right.
And that is a difference of 18,158. Just because I'm keeping track of that in my little list. Now, in the last year, and then the next part of this is the part-time salaries. And my suggestion was to put it at 4,000, which is doubling what he has available now. And it's 4,000, what was, what he, was what he requested two years ago for assistance, according to my notes from last time.
I had it at 4,500, but I couldn't find the 4,000.
Ed, why don't you have zero then?
Because what I had done was moved Ulenberg to full-time. But we got rid of, if I doing that.
Okay.
If I wanted to, if he was, there wouldn't need to have an additional person to commit.
Either one, either member is fine with me. Definitely. So one of the problems is this town hall office allocation. But also, we're having a lot of other problems to address. 4,000, 4,500, anyone want to start giving me additional input on this number?
Either or.
I penciled in 4,000.
Okay, let's do 4,000. Sorry, Don.
It's fine.
So that's, that should be, you might notice here at the time, adding 4,000. Okay. I need soft, software, I think we need to remove, or add. We need to add software into this line because we were allocating software from.
Certain departments, right?
So there needs to be a new, new line item.
No.
There needs to be a new line item called assessing software. I think this is the website in the avatar. Avatar license and the website broadcasting of the text. Could be Vision, Vision. Oh, yeah. Vision appraisal. Yep, that's it. Really, I'm sorry. Let's see, more than that, 7,400?
It's going to go into assessing software?
Whatever Don.
Don?
Remembered to be assigned. Whatever Don, yeah. Don's creating the system.
But for now, assessing software, we know the line item. How much is it?
$7,400.
But that's because we took it out of the departments. Okay. I'm getting the grasp on my last name.
Are there any other suggested changes?
That's right.
Yes, go ahead.
Postage, based on past history, current actuals.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to bring that down to 1,000. I think that still gives us a pretty safe yield.
Don, either 600 gives you a safe yield?
Yeah, I'm just not sure, you know, on timing of sending out various mailings and stuff. But, I mean, let's go 800.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. Down to 1,000, Mike?
800.
800.
If everyone agrees.
Yep.
Yes. Any other changes for assessing?
I had, it's not a big change, but access dues and subscriptions, just bringing that down to 900, but it would be coming pretty close. And where we've cut this other part of the post, which you should probably just leave it.
All right, we go.
I think we better leave it.
Yeah, I'd like to just keep it where it's at. It's up a little bit.
I'd like to keep it where it's at, but if we could just write that we're not level funding it because we're not level funding.
Oh, yeah. In the column text? It's a 5% increase, basically. Yep. Conservation Commission.
Go ahead.
Level funding at 55? No, I think she just said change the text.
No, I meant just, we can do 50 instead of, the text says we're level funding, but we're not, so.
Yep. Conservation Commission.
Good with it.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right. Economic Development.
Good.
I, the only question I have there is, is what is the contracted services that we're budgeting 4,000 for, but in two, you know, last two, last year and a half actuals, we have zero.
All I can tell you is what I had, my proposal is, is that with the downtown project that's going on, that we use it to work with the businesses.
Okay.
Do some advertising and stuff, so that's, this is what I want to use this fund for this current year, when we start up the projects, we can get some, some meat, some stuff in the newspaper, and similarly with.
Can, can we add that to the narrative? Is it possible?
Sure.
Before the budget committee gets it?
Yep. Yeah, well, I'm going to, I've been making notes and we're going to, I'm going to be going in and putting additional notes for what you all talked about and what I picked up during the discussion, but I will put that in there.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
That change? Insurance. These are kind of the contractual, and we just worked on last fall.
Okay.
Not much control here. All right, moving on. Debt service, okay, this one we might need to change.
Correct.
So right now, the way that, based on the initial, the early advice from the annual auditor, Lance and Keith, that has been provided to the town administrator and finance director, the, right now are, well, let's see. The debt service includes the open space bond, which we floated and we're paying $100,000 a year principal, and a decreasing amount of interest, this next year is $67,000. And as we know, when we bought the, when we built the Fire Public Works building, the previous administration did not float the bond, but instead used the fund balance to pay the actual cost of constructions, basically borrowing the money from ourselves and paying it back through a bond payment each year, which is $120,000. And this would be the year, fourth year after this is paid, or this is the fourth payment?
So we, this would be, I think this is the fourth payment.
So we're down, we have 1.24 million, not, not 1.36?
1.36 minus this payment, because there are many balances.
Oh, we have my payment this year.
Correct.
Okay. So we all, this year, if you look at the actual zero still, we haven't paid ourselves the transfer yet.
So what's our remaining balance?
1.36 right now, this minute. At the end of this year, it'll be 1.24. Okay, so the problem with this approach is that it was not properly, if I'm speaking incorrectly, since you're the finance officer, I don't understand this. It apparently was not booked properly against the fund balance as a liability. Therefore, the value of the fund balance was misrepresented in the previous audit report. Obviously, that's very discouraging and very frustrating to find that out and to realize that there isn't as much available fund balance. And, and I think the key thing that we need to understand is, it's not that the money's not there, it's in a form that is not cash. Basically, we've converted the bond to alone against ourselves, eliminating our cash, available cash for emergencies. And we haven't, haven't had any cash flow problems, but it creates the issue that we might in the future and that we misunderstood what our actual fund balance is. So Ed has been working with Don to figure out how this can be addressed in a way that gets the fund balance into a healthy position and minimizes the cost to the town. Remember, the original warrant article, the builder authorized a bond for 1.6 million dollars. By not bonding, we are saving money, but we might be unfortunately putting ourselves at some risk. Not at risk of, at risk of not having cash flow or having sufficient surplus for emergencies or for needed expenditures that you might use a fund balance for. So the idea would be to bond, the bond, the money that needs to be paid back to the fund balance as a general obligation bond. And depending on the timeframe for the payback, 10 years or 15 years or some other number, would potentially change this $120,000. We don't have that information fully yet, I don't think.
Well, I, you gave me one. It's interesting, I've been playing telephone tag with Rick Manley, and he left me a message just late this afternoon. It seemed to indicate that we may be able to.
Float the bond?
Float the bond.
The original?
Right. So as opposed to going for the bond. So like I said, he, he was going into a meeting, I get back shortly after 4 o'clock when he was into a meeting. I called him just before coming down, thinking that he might be in his office, and he didn't answer. I'm going to call him first thing in the morning and try to settle it out. He also indicated that he is playing telephone tag with Barbara Robinson from DRA because he wants to check with her whether everything's okay. And whatever, whatever that end result is, we'll, we'll have a conversation. I'll get an email out to everybody as to where it stands.
So the. If, if we end up floating that bond, can we pay ourselves back the money we put out each year? Out of it?
The, the goal would be that we would be able to take the money and put it back to reduce that liability and therefore increase our, our, our fund balance.
So say, say.
We put 360,000.
Well, no, we wouldn't be paying back though, it's already.
We can't do that. We would just lower the.
No, because we've been budgeting and paying that. Like, it's that we would, we would capture the 1.3 million dollars and that, or it'd be 1.24. And that would put us in a very good position.
Okay. Instead of 1.6, some of the interest and everything.
And then, you know, I, the bond schedules that I saw that you sent me were, the maximum increase, and it was on a figure, I think that was different than 1.24. We would have about $4,000 more of interest than we're budgeting right now. So it's not that big of a change, but depending on the amount and the timeframe, it might be better if we go to a private bank versus the bond bank, it might be a better rate. So the short message is that Ed and Don are exploring whether we can float the original bond or need authorization for a revised bond. And that's the questions you're trying to figure out with the bond bank and with the DRA and bond council. And hoping that next Wednesday we'll have a clear answer on that.
Absolutely.
As part of the warrant article discussion. The next Wednesday's agenda is going to have a review of the warrant articles. We'll start it tonight, but we'll look more closely at that. I can't remember what we discussed about the fire department study committee. Did that come in Wednesday, or did you think, were they meeting?
We're, we're not scheduled until a week from tonight.
Okay.
But I can brief the council on it, I think.
And then, or we could just have it the next weekend. We're going to have a little bit of time. And that's not a bond, so it doesn't have to have a special public hearing. So I don't know if anybody has any questions that we can try to answer, maybe to dig into the memo earlier this week about the situation.
Just probably one question really. I know we're still up in the air as far as if we're going to be able to float the bond, but it's my understanding that doesn't the DRA require town and market to have a set amount set aside for, for a fund balance?
A range.
Yes, they, they, they require that the town keep between 8% to 17%. And there's a formula that they use as what that amount is. So it'd be 8, 8 to 17% of that formula. So we'd have to, we can run through the formula real quick, I have it up on my.
So I guess my question is, you know, in the meantime, do we need to involve the DRA in this, or have they already been involved with this?
DRA is being involved in it only in that Rick Manley is going to ask them a generic question. I have the community, here's a set of facts, here's what, you know, my, my counsel as it relates to tax implications has said to me, can they move forward with doing the bond at this point? And if Barbara says yes, then we can potentially move forward with it. If she says no, then we would have to go through, and that's the other thing, Rick says, what you do is you do a tax exempt bond, be able to do that. And that's what I want, I need to have a conversation with him and then talk to the folks at DRA, make sure we get the right type of wording in it to move forward.
Like the, the 8 to, 8 to 17% is a guideline? It's not, there's no penalty for being over or under.
I mean, the purpose of the, of the fund balance is for a catastrophic event, correct? And, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, we're probably well below the required number at this point, on paper.
And the whole theory.
Or the cash.
Yeah, definitely.
Way to put it.
The whole theory behind it is if there's a crisis, you've got enough cash on hand to operate for a couple of months. And I go back to school funding issue a few years ago. Towns should not borrow for the most part. But those that had a healthy fund balance at least had something to tie them over to take, sort of everything out.
Also, doesn't it allow us to avoid tax anticipation notes?
Yes. That's certainly a benefit. The other, the other positive benefit of that is we float the bond. If you were to float yourself a bond, you'd get a much better bond rating because you've got a healthy surplus within those guidelines.
The tax anticipation note is just, it's a, we don't, we've never done it as far as I know, since I've been on the council. But a lot of towns will issue notes anticipating the tax payments they get in December because they don't have the cash to keep the town running. And if you have a fund balance, that helps keep it.
My, my concern, and we can talk about it another time, but my concern is where the 1.6 million came from? Since we didn't float the bond, was it, I mean, it came from the balance, did it come from different departments? Do we have the financial kind of history of where that money was pulled for at that time in order to do that?
Let me, let me, I can tell you briefly. Roughly, if you look at your books, there's $2.4 million surplus. There are two categories, designated and undesigned. What's commonly referred to as surplus is the undesigned fortune. So what they're physically, what they're doing is taking that money out of the undesigned and saying you've got a liability against it, so you can't use it. But if you look at total surplus, it'll be the 2.4, 2.3 million dollars that nobody heard. But you, you have a liability to yourself, so they're recognizing that and pulling that out of your available fund balance to use for other things.
What's the designated?
It means there's a liability against it. Like.
The health contracts.
Yeah, like, what, at the end of the year, you know, certain liabilities for employees for help, for approved vacation and sick leave, that, that's something that they would put as a, against the fund balance.
Right. So where we keep about 16% would be considered the undesigned.
Yes. And that's what they call, we refer to as surplus.
And so that's, and that's where they, the money was pulled out in that one year? All of that money was pulled out of that?
And the problem was it wasn't, it never got subtracted off the fund balance.
Right, so it said that we still have that money in there, we didn't.
And I remember specific discussions where I said, well, if I, this fund balance, if I add the bond, the self-bond to it, that's the balance, and I was told, yes. So I know that, I understood that we actually had that cash plus what we were paying ourselves back as a real, but it's the opposite, which changes the picture.
Maybe one thing that we, we should do is look at what the actual cost ended up being for the facility. I don't know if it was exactly 1.6 or if it was something less. You know, they just said 1.6 is what, our bonding authority will just pay, you know, 120 for the next 15 to 16 years to get, get it down. So if we look at that and see that the town was able to complete that building for less than that, and that subtract off what we have and.
Right, and that's the history I'd like to see, and I'd like to see that it came from specifically at the year end, the undesigned, and that it didn't come from other areas. I guess that's what we want to make sure of.
That might take a little time.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be right this minute.
This week?
No. That's why I said, I just, I just want to bring it up now that we're talking about it.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, just so that I'm clear on this, and obviously the public is clear on it, this isn't strictly because of Fire Station DPW building that the, the balance is so low. It also deals with, if I'm not mistaken, the buy-down on the tax rate and the insurance deficit. That's also taken into account as to why the fund balance is, is low, or lower than anticipated.
And, and that the trial balance or the balancing of the books when they change and converted systems was out of balance by $143,000, that hit the account also.
So it's not just this, but it's all of those combined which has gotten us down to this, this low balance.
If you remember last night, I mentioned that, that the auditors are going to allow us to work at the health insurance deficit. So, they've actually taken that aside. And they're saying as long as you have a plan in place, we won't basically, they're gonna judge the fund balance with that.
We do not at this moment have a specific fund balance number.
That's correct. From them.
From them.
We have funded from the last audit.
But it's not right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, getting back to the budget, so then you're suggesting we might not, this number might be one sixty, you said it's probably gonna add forty thousand.
Do you have either of those schedules with us, just so we can put in a, a worst case scenario? It might be good to get that, and then we can put in the worst case scenario and then we can more question. Does this, does the microphone pick it up well?
Yeah, it's all right.
It's as good as it's kind of been. I think this, uh-
Yeah.
I think it might be good, uh, this gets, the memo gets made available on the website. Fund balance. Yeah.
You have to get a PDF.
You can make it a PDF, I can make it a PDF. I'd rather it be a PDF.
Can you email the W G?
We're just waiting for Mr. Renowski to come back with a schedule for possible bond payments.
They have one more, it's new one.
Yeah. Okay, uh. All right. Is our assessed value still seven hundred and thirteen million?
That's our total assessed valuation.
All right, so this is, this bond payment is, these schedules are based on one point three six million, which is really, I guess it's gonna be one point two four. Unless we float it like now, which would then save us the payment this year.
The rate's probably dropping too, so.
Yeah, and the rates are pretty good, four percent, four point five percent depending on like ten years, fifteen years. So, ten years, the maximum payment would be one ninety-eight. Fifteen years would be one sixty. And that's four point five percent, so I think we're probably looking at one fifty-ish. Because the second year of the bond payment, the principal left was one point two six million, which is basically what we'd have. And that payment was one fifty-one. So if we put another thirty thousand dollars in there, assuming we thought a fifteen year payback was fine, which, that'd be an eighteen year payback on the overall project, that's pretty reasonable for a building. So if we put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we should be pretty safe. And that's thirty thousand you want to be budgeting. And if anyone else wants to like these, pass them around. So we'll move that to one fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand? That's a net change of plus thirty thousand. Okay, and we'll discuss this more next week. And I think part of the discussion will be to, to, to start discussing a specific health trust fund deficit reduction plan that we adopt and address the auditors. We can start that process and we'll report them. All right, the next one is-
Can I make a suggestion? Can we go to solid base disposals since George is here?
Are you here for anything in particular, or?
I'm here because Rick couldn't make it.
Oh, okay.
For public works and probably state through the CIP.
Okay, sorry. Everything else, David.
All right. So MIS. Hold on a second, oh yeah, MIS, okay. My suggestion is to cut the downtown wireless, which is eighteen hundred bucks. And that's in the second page, page twenty-four. It's a great idea, but I think it, I think it's, the next year it's probably not gonna get used with the construction project. And I'm just not sure if it's the best use of our limited funds right now. If we have can, one's fine with that. Especially if we won't be digging up downtown. Is that, is that to you at all, or? Okay, I've seen multiple head shake and so, that's a yes. Down to nine hundred. He had indicated that it was eighteen hundred dollars for a two thousand radius circle.
So we're doing eight, eight hundred?
The new number will be nine hundred dollars.
I have eighteen hundred dollars one time charge for equipment in the LE accessory.
And any other suggestions, Councilor Jones?
When I take, um, the, for, um, page twenty-three, the second one from the bottom, I count four oh seven, MIS software maintenance. If I add all those numbers up, I get twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, not thirty-nine thousand eight hundred. Am I missing?
Well, my, one observation would be, with fifty computers and Office and Word and Windows-
Is it just all that?
I gotta think there's some costs there.
So it's, so really the, it's just listing additional cost over an additional maintenance cost for all the software? So that would be, the first part just doesn't have a dollar amount attached to it? Is that what it is? Okay.
We should, that's, I mean, I would, I know the budget committee probably has the same question, so if we get it clarified for this- We can reduce it, that's great, but we don't, antivirus software, all that kinda stuff that-
Maybe just list what those are, then that would be good. And then this is a, well, Ron, if a, a subject for another time. Can we put the Town of New Market Information Services Strategic Technology Plan on an agenda for discussion? Have we discussed that before?
No.
I noticed it was in here. It looks like it's been a formalized process. Because it's in the, I know it's put in the budget book for us to help us understand the MIS department's budget, but I'm wondering if this is something that the town council should review or approve?
It's actually a document for the council to review. I stuck it in there because I wanted you guys at the council to see it. And also, I think they have, I, I've, I've talked with Doug about it, and I think the council should have a discussion.
Okay, so it's gonna be on a future, Jeff, I know. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, communication services plus a cellphone, is that to purchase a cellphone? Or is that a cellphone bill for the year?
That's a cellphone for the year. Just get cellphone billed, uh, versus a cell phone.
Okay, any other changes?
So what was the, the, uh, the yes, a software maintenance, is it twenty-nine seven?
No, if you had, that, and have them verify that the difference is miscellaneous software that is listed out in detail. All right, next one's channel thirteen. Um, my suggestion was to, uh-
Keep it at seventy-eight hundred?
Was to cut it to fifteen thousand. Right now we have, how much budget, is it seventy-eight hundred? But it's a different line item, this is a new category.
Yeah, exactly, it's, they're right, you know.
But we have, we have money some in, we're-
We have seven thousand eight hundred that we budgeted for channel thirteen part-time.
And that was in which budget?
I think it was mine.
And we had it in, in the finals. So I'm, I put down fifteen six hundred is my suggestion, I'm comfortable with it.
I mean, they, yeah, we're basically increasing the availability for professionals to take the audity of meetings and different events and stuff like that, so. The council thinks that's appropriate, that's what you should do, make sure. And yeah, there was, there was some discussion about the hourly rate, and they could adjust that from what they proposed to give them more time. If he was minimal to have it.
And that's what we were budgeting before, ten dollars an hour for fifteen hours a week. And then this budget, the suggested increase was to fifteen dollars an hour at fifty weeks, or thirty hours a week. So this kind of thing, I, I would assume that the town administrator would just set the rate that worked within that budget.
I'd like the notes on both of these categories to not reference the Comcast franchise fee. Cause it's not, it's kinda suggesting that if we spend more money, the fee goes up and it's covered. There's a set fee on the contract that goes into the budget.
Right, and, and what I did is I changed it, it should be an offset.
Okay.
So that twenty-two five is gonna change to?
Fifteen thousand? I like nice people. That serves, okay. So that changes, that's a reduction of seventy-five. All right, are we ready to go on to, let's do this, CIP.
What about the equipment, since you're making an attention on the equipment? Drop that down to five.
Did I?
CIP committee proposed fifty thousand for channel thirteen capital reserve, so therefore reduce this.
Yeah, I mean, the fifty thousand dollars for channel thirteen capital reserve, that's a whole different discussion. Yeah, five thousand dollars seemed like an awful lot of money. I mean, ten thousand seemed like an awful lot of money for the, just to replace what we have. I know we, I know there's a need to get better microphones and stuff, but I really didn't, I, I think I had said that I didn't want us to invest that money and then the town council chambers no longer be the council chambers. And then suddenly have our meetings down here and not have a system that works. So this money, five thousand dollars, is necessary to, you know, for the DVDs and tapes and, okay, this console broke, we need to replace it or something like that. That's what I was expecting this to be used for, or the camera gets dropped at break.
So they say this is going to be bad?
It's actually all of us.
Yeah, I think it really won't, I'm fine, I'm comfortable with five.
Yeah, that's what I essential then, based on, on the costs.
I think, I think we're on the low side. Considering the current problems we're having with the systems, especially the one that's in council chambers.
I haven't been aware that those are the problems.
There's been a lot of static. Doug is looking into what is causing it. But if there is a, if there is a possibility that they might need maybe to replace that equipment, depending what the problem actually is, not always the feedback problem. Also, the speakers down here are blown, they don't work. There's a number of items that are going on currently that are going to need to be addressed.
Okay, I'm, I'm not comfortable, I guess the concern like I have is that I'm not comfortable putting in a figure without a breakdown of how it was determined or what it's gonna be with. I, just, that's the first I heard of. I mean, I was aware we had feedback issues, but that's usually a combination of the volume being too loud and the person being too close to the mic. I don't have a chance on Comcast, I don't see the public access. So I, I was unaware of this.
Don, was this any particular line item in your budget previous, or would you know what we've actually spent out for? You wouldn't?
So I just tried to look to see if it was there, cause so you could, should consider that last year, all we really budgeted for channel thirteen was seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And now this year, we're asking, if you, if you put it at five, you're asking for twenty thousand dollars as opposed to seven thousand eight hundred. So it is kind of, I mean, it is a jump, we're giving them something to work with that they haven't had before, so.
And maybe if the, we do support a Warren article to create the capital reserve fund, that could help address a major overhaul.
Right.
I would say that if we're gonna go forward with fifty thousand dollars, that'd be a good explanation of what fifty thousand dollars is gonna buy. Cause that whole system in there was like thirty. So, who I remember, a couple years ago. Between that and the wiring, microphones upstairs, and local cameras. All right, so we're moving up to five, sounds like consensus? Sorry, but we're not in the spending mood. Okay, do we wanna do the CIP at the end of the budget? Cause they're kinda different, so. All right, emergency management. Which is the yellow tab at the least.
Still seeing anything we need to do there?
No.
Emergency services.
Yeah. Yeah, it's associated services. Okay, public works administration.
Which is administration, correct?
Right, it's a pink.
Page thirty.
Yep. I'm gonna, could have been, give some more. Please feel free to continue.
He did say keep on, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a suggestion. On, uh, page thirty-one, the last line item, public works administration advertising. It has been suggested to lower that by four hundred dollars? No. Yes, lower it by four hundred dollars, um, just to get it in line. Would you put it at eight hundred dollars to get it somewhat in line with the actuals over the year, over the last couple of years? Which is actually still high, but.
Do you know if there was any thing that was, or, or George, you said you're here to represent for that department too? Was there anything that was gonna be going out advertising, or, or is it because of the, the bid, what we've been demanding for bid processes and stuff? Does that increase it, or?
I actually don't know, I'm, I'm here for three specific items.
Okay, that's not one of them.
And he gave me this.
I would say it would probably be if they were advertising for particular equipment and putting it up there. You know, we, we send it to different vendors, we put a notice in the paper. And it could also be that if they have, um, you know, somebody leaves and there's a need to hire for advertising or, um, individuals who want to plow snow in the winter, you know, with their trucks, they actually haul snow away, I should say.
Extra summer house and stuff like that.
Yep.
But I guess if you take a look at it, I mean, oh six, oh seven, the actual was a hundred eighty dollars.
Five, but it's five, right?
Year to date, this year we're, we're at a hundred and thirty-two, so, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking that-
You could probably cut it even more.
Yeah, I'm, there's a lot going on with the downtown, I mean, I don't know if you're gonna need any help with advertising for the downtown project, or?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna take it all away and play it that close, but I think we can definitely top the four hundred dollars. definitely top the four hundred dollars. Brian, just so you know, on the last line item on page thirty-one, the advertising.
Thank you.
Going on your recommended, on your suggestion.
Okay.
Dropping it down to eight hundred.
Okay.
Again, with, with the actual of oh six, oh seven and the year-to-date now, I think we can say put it down to six hundred on that one, basically cutting it now.
I've written six hundred to that eight hundred.
I mean, based on the actual, six hundred, it should still be sufficient.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, six hundred. Did you discuss postage?
Um, no, that was the first one.
Yeah, we've only used, what, eighty-six for actuals in oh six, oh seven. Why don't we need five hundred? I'd say two hundred. It's sufficient.
Most definitely. Okay.
Would we bring, tell me, do you need two hundred bucks?
I'd be willing to, in terms of, like, taking this thing I did and revising it with all the changes and explanations, and then you can add to the budget carry, so they at least can see the rationale why council made a change.
Yep.
Help them find this. Would you like to do it, John?
No.
Any other changes for public works administration?
No.
All right. Sidewalk, I think. Yep, roadways and sidewalks.
I have one.
Sure.
Um, this one always seems to get hit, but I'm just curious, do we, do we have any recent figures on expenditures for the department? Do we have the January numbers yet, on the chance? No?
I, I, I haven't yet.
Oh, okay. I, I'm, I'm looking at the winter salt based on. Based, based on, you know, actuals two years ago, and I'm trying to remember how the winter was and.
Two years ago, it was fairly mild.
It was.
Yeah.
It was warm.
And I can tell you that each, you know, each week when I'm going through the payables and I'm looking at at least, you know, five to seven thousand dollars on salt, and we're going through a lot of salt here.
And one of the comments I wrote down, Mike, is that the salt expense is up a dollar fifty from last year per ton.
At, when you're talking to forty-six fifty?
Yeah, that represents a dollar fifty increase, I believe. Let me see if my notes from last year.
You know, one of the things that's happening, Rick was talking about it, the department had been noticing it of weight on the, on a lot of the bills that were paying. Everybody, everybody is now charging us with the fuel surcharge. I mean, I'm looking at what today was a hundred twenty dollars. You know, I think, I think George was, was talking that he's got chemicals that come in as fuel surcharges, you know, so that's, that's another, that's just meeting us up.
The winter salt last year, we had, the budget proposal was seventeen hundred tons at forty-five bucks a ton. And this is seventeen hundred tons of forty-six. If you want to give me a couple of minutes, I can get that, get around.
Sure.
It's a good, yeah, does that help?
You know, because I got a figure that would be at least halfway through.
Yeah, this year is going to obviously go all the way up.
Extreme.
You have, in terms of the different kinds of systems that you had. Not a lot of snow, but a lot of.
Nuisance.
I'm, I'm just basing it on, on if you knocked off two hundred ton, because you're looking at seventeen hundred ton. If you go with fifteen hundred ton, you're going to save ten grand. If my numbers are correct.
Well, I, you know, and the, the thing is, is that we're budgeting for a year from now. And, I mean, we could run into a winter that was comparable to two years ago where it was, you know, really nice and warm.
Yeah, that's why I was curious what we're running for numbers currently.
You know, like, right now, with the weather that we have.
We're up, obviously.
Yeah, the weatherman said it's going to be nice and sunny tomorrow, and the next thing you're going to walk out and there's two weeks of snow. It's like, okay, where's the sun?
All right, so let's keep going, if there's anything else.
Is there a way to put the winter salt into an evolving fund? No, there's only very specific categories that you can utilize evolving funds. I wish they had, you know, a larger number, but they, it's limited to like four items.
Any other things that we want to change or discuss on this part of the budget? All right, so we'll come back to that. Street lighting?
Street lighting.
Street lighting. The budget request is the CM funding level for electricity? The fixtures, you went up a little bit.
Is that the last page?
The next section.
Oh.
Got a little tab.
Street light, okay.
I'm comfortable with, I mean, we could maybe cut streetlight fixtures a little bit.
Does that include the streetlight fixtures for downtown? Or is that in the difference?
This is the, this is, I think, to replace when the bulbs and valves that break. Well, this, no, this is the street lighting for all the streetlights in here. Okay.
With the exception of the downtown redevelopment?
Yeah, we can. Right, but we don't, I, I think the question is, we don't have to, if one of those ones that we rent from PSNH, the tall ones and the tall poles, if those break, we don't pay to fix the light bulb. But if one of them break and the streetlights we just installed like on Nichols Ave, we fix that.
Correct. But what happens is, it doesn't matter whether the light, that pole, the light is on or it's off. We're paying a charge for those things. Because it's kind, and that's why it's important for, you know, somebody who supports a pole, you know, the streetlight, we get somebody in there. It doesn't matter, if that light's on all day long, you know, it doesn't matter. We, we're paying for that light.
Well, I guess, I just am just pointing out that the fixtures is for the lamps, the poles and lamps at home.
Yep.
That's what that costs. So is there a particular reason why you increased it?
We have more of them. Don't forget down on Exodus Street, there's got to be at least ten down there now.
Right, plus next year we'll have.
And next year we're going to have everything all the way down. So we've increased the number of fixtures that we have.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Bridge repair.
Yeah, Rick talked about that. He said he got some estimates in some bridges. Remember the last meeting you were at?
Yeah, I was confused because this is guard rail repairs, but when we talked about the CIP, there's a fifty-four thousand dollar expenditure.
Not for the guard rail, that's for actually repairing the bridge.
Correct.
Construction. The structure itself. This is for signs and.
Rick told me today that this is three, place three guard, where is Ashworm Road, the new road in.
Barbara Creek.
Coast.
Yep. Yeah, I had that written down. I was just trying to understand how it related to the fifty thousand dollars for the new bridge. Okay.
Isn't the guard rail technically part of the bridge?
I think it depends on how the bridge structure is created, but if it's just, you know, if they just drill holes and put in the wood and then screw in the, it's not part of the bridge, but it's like, you have a cement bridge with the post in the cement.
Yeah.
The bridge that's being fixed isn't listed, it isn't figured in here for a new guard rail.
Which one, which bridge is going to be fixed?
Mast, it's called mast.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I remember watching the water go down, it was pretty incredible.
On Maston Drive, that bridge, did the water go over the road?
Paul's road.
Oh, wow.
Paul's road, back down, so it was coming over that, and then washing over into the water treatment plant and the roof of the water treatment plant had pavement, it was amazing. That was two years ago, not this past April, it may, may have. Uh, okay, ready to go to Billings and Grounds? I have to, we completed Billings and Grounds. Oh, sorry, I'm just looking at the, I'm just flipping through the tabs.
We do some of these, Brian.
Cemetery maintenance.
Do it again, see if you love the same.
Cemetery maintenance, cut by half. Fifteen oh six nine plus ten percent.
I, yeah, this is weird. I have that at least.
Do we do this?
No.
No, we had a lot of questions. My notes in the spreadsheet said we need to reallocate the budget numbers based on actuals, and seems to have not been budgeted for some reason so decisively.
You took John Pahopek out. I have John Pahopek.
Correct, so we, so that's why thirty-one seventy-two seems high.
Plus ten percent because of the, why was the ten percent discussed?
Reallocation.
Okay.
But this number.
The other person's salary is sixty thousand dollars.
And I'm assuming that you probably have this piece of paper right here, which is all the wages Don had given it.
Let's find that.
It shows that the wages should be sixteen thousand six forty.
Okay.
Say it again, sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand six forty. That's what I had, the cemetery, one fifty percent.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So you're saying we should make home six sixteen, six forty?
Yep.
I like that, it's a cut that I didn't even have in this spreadsheet. Can someone do the math for the difference?
Fifteen thousand one hundred twelve dollars. Sorry. I would, I'd use your guy clear and check it. That one was pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah. Cemetery maintenance drops full-time salaries by fifteen thousand one hundred and twelve. Okay.
And then what's the, the part-time salaries? We're keeping it, that's, that's, was the saying?
I don't, well, I think that the issue is that she's part-time and that should be the reflective of the sixteen forty. Because one of the things that Don has tried to do is to allocate, because she's fifty percent here and she's fifty percent in building grounds.
Yep.
So.
Are you saying delete the first line item and just say, so your part-time salaries?
We took Don, his back.
I think that.
He has a way of doing the part-time salaries and the full-time salaries because they hit different accounts. If it's in a part, if it's in a full-time, there's the retirement and there's the benefits and things like that. So it probably may be allocated and where, where he had it set.
All right, in terms of this part of the budget, we'll come back to the part-time salaries, salaries on Don's back. Is there any other changes?
I had one thing, Rick wanted to bring in, the buildings and grounds electrical and, oh yeah, for the community center.
All right, hold on. Let's, we'll finish cemetery maintenance, then we'll like, because we're in cemetery maintenance, we'll go back to that.
Okay.
Just, I don't think there's anything else cemetery maintenance, I'm just making sure. Okay, so is this the, what's the issue again?
This is for the, the new market, new market, housing authorities now bringing in electrical and food costs for the communities.
What's that, buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds, and Rick gave you a memo right there.
On her?
What we need to do is, is put ninety-one hundred, ninety-two hundred dollars for electric and heating oil, because the housing authority was covering that.
For the rec.
For the rec center, and they're no longer able to do that because.
Why not?
They're, they're experiencing cutbacks in different areas, so the housing authority is charging that back to us. And we have a letter from.
Yellow sheet of paper. And, and Ernie's right, he did tell us, and Al did tell us last year, I recall this being mentioned to us.
What page is that on?
The Billings and Grounds is the second section right before cemetery maintenance.
Yeah, but what page?
Uh, we're probably going to have to create a separate category because basically the way it's all broken down is electric and it's by Young's Lane Town Hall. Parks probably have to have electric for the community center and heat, oil, propane for community center in charge. Try to get those, in those lines.
Brian, buildings and grounds. Okay. For what other names?
So the eighteen thousand?
Yeah. Some backside.
Which, which, except line item except Brian?
There is no line item for it.
Oh, okay.
So we, there will be new, assuming we write it for it, there will be new lines that say electricity, community center, and then propane, community center, and each one of them will be ninety-two hundred dollars, we're suggesting.
I have, it can be ninety-two hundred dollars. Be looking, they're fairly close to each other.
Is that, is everybody in agreement with that?
And there's going to be a new line item, you said, correct?
Two new lines.
Yeah.
So two lines. Now that's the rect of that.
Yep.
Okay.
But for Billings and Grounds, I just, I didn't bring this up before, but we don't have the lights anymore at Leo Land Rock. Shouldn't that save us on electricity?
I would assume the answer is yes.
Because we only spent a thousand dollars through six months of the year, that included the summer, which would probably be the best time to use that field and be in half lights.
Right.
So.
Where, where are you, Brian?
I mean, you already cut it a little bit, so maybe that's why. It's page thirty-eight, buildings, grounds, electricity, parks.
Yeah, I have a note here, remove the lights at ball field.
And then the budget last year was ninety-six, the actual was fifty-four for the year before. Year-to-date, the budget for the current year only was ninety-six. We might be able to cut that a little bit, maybe to six thousand five hundred or something like that, six thousand, six hundred.
Why do you think you don't want to cut it that amount?
I don't trust the number of fifty-four hundred dollars.
When did we cut the lights down? When did the lights go? Did they use them this past season? Or they were gone for this past season?
No, they were gone.
They were gone.
There was concerns about the safety of the poles.
Yeah.
And when they cut them down, there is no rock. And the worst thing is that PSNH does drill holes in their poles, because they did it all over my neighborhood.
To see if they're.
To check on them. And they drilled holes in the bottom, all the hole in there, it was amazing. None of them have changed.
So are you going to drop that down?
So that was the electricity bill last year without lights anyway.
Well, oh six, oh seven would have ended.
Oh, that's right, they wouldn't have that season.
So they would have had lights. It's that this year, we've only spent a thousand bucks so far, so the question I'm bringing up is, well, it sounds like to me, we're saving some money there.
I'd say five bucks.
Anyway, we just got the newest report, so hold on a second.
Three seven hundred eighty.
Fourteen, fourteen sixty-nine.
So. Probably cut it down to three thousand if we say.
Well, I mean, if we spent four hundred bucks in one month, it's probably the heating.
Who's that?
Four hundred bucks, I'd say, unless they, four or five thousand dollars should be budgeted.
Four thousand six hundred, a cut of three thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
Four thousand six hundred?
Mm-hmm. Four thousand six hundred.
Give it and take away, George.
No, that's for the, that's for the park, right?
Right, parks, electricity.
Because they have a building at Rock House this year.
That sounds ordinary, with the new, with the new scoreboard, you got, but that won't be in that, like, you have.
No, it's going to be a lot more, school board. Probably won't be big light bulbs, it'll be LEDs and stuff.
There'll be the LEDs, they won't be anything.
Yeah, comparatively, these a lot. Okay, good question.
Thanks.
Okay, are we ready to go back to cemetery maintenance? We have questions for you. Wait, you just got us, what did we get this for again?
Salt.
Salt, okay.
Salt.
So did you look?
Okay, what I said.
So you get questions? I think Mike.
What did we spend up to this?
How much did we spend?
How much was it, like?
We're, we're up to fifty-seven already.
What page is it?
Uh, page five.
And that adds up, that adds up today, supposed to today.
Yeah, I'd say we better hope for just straight snow, not a recent one.
You know, it's hard to say what he's got for stockpile, but.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're talking into price next year also compared to.
I think you're getting salt every single week, so at least you chop it too.
Well, not according to this season, because month-to-date expenses is, is zero.
Now that's.
Oh, that's as of today, okay.
Year-to-date.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. It's the entire year. Okay, so cemetery maintenance, then, will you have questions? Would you change the, please change the full-time to sixteen six forty, which represents the numbers you put into the spreadsheet of all the budget salaries? Again, we're trying to figure out the part-time, should it be zero or should it be some number, and why is it a lot of that?
What kind of cemeteries? Sixteen forty?
Is that because you took John Pahopek off that? And put him someplace else?
Yeah, he's up in, in buildings and grounds, right?
Yeah.
We all had, like you have.
So you took him out of cemetery.
And we just split, right? So it'd be sixteen forty.
Sixteen six forty.
And then the rest would be building and grounds, right?
But then should.
Clinton, Clinton is up in building and grounds, so all total is, it's thirty-seven.
How about that?
Thirty-two.
What about the part-time salary, should that be zero, who's the eleven thousand nine hundred and one dollars of expenses to date this year?
So then do we not have a full-time, any full-time at all in the cemetery, just have Clinton for fifty percent?
Right, because.
Yeah, so we shouldn't have a full-time salary line?
No, no, she's a full-time employee.
A full-time.
But half her time is.
Okay.
Is allocated to this, half is allocated to buildings and grounds.
Okay.
My notes for part-time say, part-time cemetery, thirteen dollars an hour, thirty hours a week, forty weeks a year.
Yep, that's what I have on my.
I think prior year. I think what we discussed before is that the, it was all on a full-time salary line, but there were actually part-time people in that. So I'm going to have to take fifteen six out of, out of, out of the full-time line, draw up a down to the part-time line.
So we're not really saving any money.
So all amounts are the same, just, it's a.
So sixteen six forty should be into full-time, and you're saying fifteen thousand six hundred should be part-time?
For years.
For multiple people to use part-time raises.
In the cemeteries. Because according to what you just gave us, for the current year expenditures, expenditures of today. We've got nine thousand two sixty-four spent in full-time salaries, twelve thousand four ninety-seven spent in part-time salaries.
I, I think what happened is that there was never anything budgeted on the part-time line.
Right, it was all budgeted in the full-time.
Full-time, so we split that out. So even though you're, you're booking it properly.
Yeah.
Okay, so fifteen thousand six hundred in part-time.
We should just increase that, because we only took fifteen one twelve away.
Yes, with the net gain of five hundred bucks.
Five hundred and dollars. So we have sixteen forty and fifteen six hundred of the two numbers?
Yeah.
So we really do pay forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year for cemetery maintenance. Because this adds up to a full-time employee.
The answer would be yes. Due as upon that fifty percent of our time is allocated here and fifty percent in building and grounds.
Right.
And then during the summer with the growth season, we have a lot of people from Moline and Tremaine and then Ray believes, and that's the part that you do, but they're not really doing work during the middle of the year.
But our actual time.
Yeah.
During the summer is what is reimbursed through the cemetery trust fund. The rest of the time would be through the tax.
Sixteen. So then at fifteen thousand.
Sixteen six forty during, fifteen six hundred.
So if this isn't coming out of the operating budget, it's coming out of the cemetery trust fund?
That portion that she works during the summer would come out of the cemetery trust funds, and the balance of it would come out of the general fund, the rest of the.
So it's half her salary basically coming out of.
Because, you know, I guess it'd be the workout or work week would probably balance out. So they get in there as soon as they can to do spring cleanup, do spa work, so.
So everything listed here is coming out of the operating budget? And then there's another percentage, there's another salary coming out of the cemetery trustees' budget? So we really have more than one full-time?
No.
It's getting reimbursed into here, it just offsets this.
Cemetery trust reimbursement, eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's just offsetting this, not additional money coming back to us?
So we're getting about half of what we spent.
So we can really look at it as a revenue coming back into us?
Correct.
What's that?
Is there any more, is there any more, or is that just? It depends on what the trust fund's producing and what the, and how they can use, the utilization of the trust fund, what they can charge against it.
Everybody comfortable?
On the electricity in cemetery? We've only used twenty-five percent, almost twenty-six percent of what was budgeted last year, which was, his name is, we're asking for this year. It's only a small amount, but. I think we cut that down a little bit.
Okay.
How much did you want to cut it down by, Mike? Doncic.
The wheels are short.
What's, what do we have, like, lights out there?
In the, in the shed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Recharge and equipment stuff, I missed one.
I think we safely could have the two hundred, I mean, safety box.
All right. Vehicle maintenance, number seventeen.
Did you cover the buildings and grounds part-time salaries in provisions, or did I miss that?
We did that already.
Yep, there we go.
You did?
Yep. We did that a couple of weeks ago. And, and we didn't give you all four.
We did get the two.
You got two.
And the hours are different too.
It's a different number.
Two forty hours, thirty minutes.
Two forty.
Two or thirty hours.
Twenty-four hundred man-hours. Whatever that ends up being.
Just one of my questions, of course, they ask, so.
Okay, that's okay. Vehicle maintenance, ready?
Ready?
We need to change the equipment maintenance line because there's an accidental cut.
I think, correct. Should be fifty-three thousand.
Thanks.
The difference at twenty?
Yep.
I have on my notes, um, vehicle overtime, Dawn took pics on the, on the actuals. That was a, different from the actuals, I believe, that. It was maybe a mistake, maybe, or something, I just was, I'm not sure.
Well, it's at eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-eight right now.
And we're only asking five thousand?
Yeah, but I think, if I remember correctly, when we were discussing that, our mechanic was out of service for a while due to dis, knee surgery. So we were bringing a lot of the work out to be done. So, I mean, it's going to cost you some more money. And if you.
Is there any belt? I remember the surgery, I just thought.
Yeah, but, you know, because I, I, Rick was there, and I, and I believe we were talking about the fact, you know, obviously Bud, who's the regular mechanic, was not around. So he was sending a lot of work out to, like, Dogma Motor Mart, and sometime, you know, some, if, if it wasn't after-hours call, they were getting hit with, you know, emergency calls. I don't know if that would have gone under overtime expenses or not, but, because when you start to think about it, the fact that Bud was out so long, how can he get that amount of overtime?
Right, I think, I think it might have been somebody else being called in to work.
But we only have the one mechanic.
Do we have somebody else with us, is it Bud also?
And right now, we expended eleven thousand seven forty-eight.
Can you, you, you might run upstairs and double-click in on that and see what comes up? Because, I mean, it's a good question, because in two thousand six, seven, it was twelve thousand two hundred and four hours spent. So we've been over by, you know, over-expending in that category by ten thousand hours consistently, then we should just fix it and put the right number in there, or figure out how to have less medical maintenance expenses. Which is, you know, not necessarily the deal. I was going to be able to, well, I have to see. This is interesting, that oh five, oh six didn't have any money in overtime. And we budgeted thirty-four hundred and four dollars in oh six, oh seven.
No, I didn't.
Might have been, might have been when he was out. Well, I'm just saying, in the oh five, oh six budget, there was never any money budgeted or spent on overtime.
Well.
According to this report from last year.
Would, would this have anything to do with the fact that Bud actually managed to plow during storms, which would be overtime for him?
Yeah. Like, does it, I don't think, like, goes out.
Yes, you do.
Can you address that, but I think he's in the shop.
Bud does plow, but it's, it's charged to the plowing account, he does plow. It's generally charged to the plowing account. He goes out in one time and does a small streaks and pounders.
Yeah.
So if he's doing that, it's charged to that account.
Okay, so.
Yes, we're good.
Now, how come oh six, oh seven, his salary was forty and change, and then it goes to forty-eight? And then it goes to fifty-three, how is that calculated? Why is there such a?
You're asking a question that I can't address.
Well, the, the jump from the, from the oh seven, oh eight budget to the oh eight or nine budget represents that reallocation on every single salary line? I don't know, we talked about.
That ten percent?
Yeah, okay, but I. But, and then if you do the, if you do the math, though, from the oh six, oh seven actuals to the oh seven, oh eight, that's budget, that looks like.
Did they do it twice?
Looks like we might have been over-budgeting it at that, at that point, because that's more than five. It should have been a representation of five.
What do we have here?
It should be around forty-three, yeah.
Well, here's what's weird, is the oh six, oh seven actuals is forty thousand?
Yeah.
My budget for oh six, oh seven says we budgeted forty-six, three twenty-two.
Correct.
So either, maybe he took a long time off and wasn't even paid. Or somebody's salary got misposted. Or the budget number doesn't reflect.
Oh, well, you know what, that probably represent, there's a decrease in the full-time salaries, but an increase in the overtime, perhaps the employee was out on an unpaid leave, and one of the other employees in DPW was working overtime to cover that. We'll find out.
We'll read some more information back down, so we'll come back to this one, unless the other areas are changed within it.
Actually, a few suggestions.
Yes, please.
Vehicle maintenance rec department, realizing that we're in the process of purchasing a new bus van, whatever, with a, with a maintenance agreement, I think we can cut that maintenance number down.
Don't forget, we have other.
I, I know we have others, but we've got one vehicle that basically we're not.
Right, it's, it doesn't warrant heat for the next year.
Right, but that's an additional vehicle, we're still going to have this.
We still have the Camp Camellia?
Vehicles, I mean, it's going to go to the, that one will go to the Club Camellia, but they're, they're still older. Do you know what I mean, like, this one, this amount, we've already bought that bus. And that bus wasn't included in this amount, so this was budgeting for the, for the other vans. So you're, so there would be one, I think it's a green van that was budgeted.
There's got to be a solid one, right?
That was budgeted in here, well, I think that the plan was that the green one would get bought from Club Camellia with grant monies that would go to, or that suggested funding from Club Camellia to pay for the green van to then be used for Club Camellia. So you'd have maintenance of, what does that leave us with for the rec department? One, the brand-new, the brand-new bus, which is covered under maintenance, we don't have to include it here.
Blue.
Well, would we have to include our maintenance?
You got an oil changes and something.
Yeah, that's, we still have to do all that.
Now, would Club Camellia be responsible to pay for the maintenance for that van that they get through the grant money?
Oh, it seems so.
Yeah, they would reimburse us for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't be here right now.
Oh, sure, because right up there.
Have you been convinced to keep it, or would you like to press on?
I'm looking at this year's actual, and right now it's under seventeen hundred. I know we had high actuals in oh six, oh seven, but. I mean, I, I guess if nobody else feels.
No, I just looked at that actual too. I can see it going down a little bit.
Four?
It's probably four again, let's see.
This is vehicle maintenance rec department?
Yeah. All right, anything else in vehicle maintenance? We're going to come back to that one, I think.
We, we were supposed to switch radio maintenance and equipment purchase?
Yes, there's a mistake that, that ten thousand goes down to.
Goes down to equipment purchase and zero goes up top of the ten thousand is, okay.
Yeah. Solid waste, suppose? Okay, so trash, solid waste. Like, everything well-based, plastic bags, well. Things seem to be pretty well-budgeted here.
The equipment purchases are on page seven.
Okay.
We, we own those containers that are up there, town physically owns those.
At least seven, yeah.
Okay. Do we need to get two, two new ones, can we, you know, can we do one new one?
We're paying.
No, George, I know, I remember Rick saying.
Seven?
One of them.
Seventy. One of them is, uh, not necessarily, it's getting close to not being real safe. That's what I heard him say.
One of the containers.
At least one, I don't know if it was two. George, do you have any input on that?
I don't even mention it, but I know they take a lot of abuse and.
With especially. Maybe you could give clarification in the budget committee type, if Rick agrees that one would work.
I think part of, I think part of the problem might be that the number we have now is not sufficient.
I didn't get the sense of that, but. Is Rick around, or is it just?
No, he's had to go to training class and, and be applied on that.
Well, what does council want to do?
Can we, can we leave it nine thousand eight hundred, but get a, um? Can we, can we leave it nine thousand eight hundred, but get a, maybe just get a memo from Rick saying reminding us of why he.
If you need to do just one?
Right, why he needed the two and if he could get away this year with one. And that way we can get to the budget committee with additional information, they might be able to cut it. And then when you give the budget back to us, we can.
And what's included in the landfill testing for twenty-six thousand?
What is, what is involved with that?
Yeah.
We, we have monitoring wells up there that has samples on a quarterly basis with different types of, you know, there's different requirements. There's gas wells up there that are always being monitored and inspection of the, of the cap to make sure that it's, you know, it's not moving or there's any care, the loadings, so that, that's the engine, that's the cost for the engineering firm to carry out those tests. Do the analytical lab tests that have to be done and then write up a report and provide it to the state on a yearly basis.
Do we have a contract with them, or have we?
Hey, there is a landfill that's closed at this point in the state of Hampshire, it doesn't have the contract to do specific things. And based upon, you know, the, what the landfills, when they were closed, the type of problems that they had, it might be higher or lower, if there'd be more tests and less tests. And the goal is that over time, you know, we'll be able to get that done and move it out because, you know, we're not seeing anything. I've seen a couple of the tests, there were some areas that are, you know, different VOCs or different types of metals that we're seeing that we need to watch, both the arsenic. So, they monitor that and we receive a report on a quarterly basis and a year-end report.
Have we dealt with the same agency all along?
Yep.
The same.
Cause really, you would change, you would change in big course to get somebody else to come in and do that. Cause you've hired an engineering firm, you stay with them because they, they're taking that, they know, they know the history. And you follow, through the state, they have built up that understanding of it. The company that closed the landfill is, continues to be the company that oversees and monitors it.
And this is a more competitive bid up here then.
Well, again, you get, you're getting to a, a company that understands the entire closure process, all the wells that are there and the process that, that is, that needs to be undertaken. You can bring in somebody else and you're gonna spend a, a lot of money getting caught up. And if the, if the tests aren't done right, the state is gonna be flying down here and saying, what's going on? And they're gonna, and they're gonna suddenly, that raises a big red flag for them that something's not, not right. And we'll, we can potentially see that go up real quick.
I think we had a, we definitely executed contract recently, we might've extended.
He probably, probably, on a yearly basis, they say, here's what.
Yeah.
Based upon the testing that the state's requiring from the prior year, we definitely, this is what it is. So, it's renewed on a yearly basis.
There's another revenue source besides, not a revenue source, but there's another source that pays towards this process than us, isn't there?
The state, the state base port.
We get money from United Technologies.
That's what it is, United Technologies.
The former mill owners.
That's right.
Have a, have an agreement to pay.
Mail homes?
United Technologies, because they put stuff in there that, that are not good.
People polluted.
Right.
Excuse me, may I just ask a general question?
Yeah.
I mean, have these professionals that have taken on a project and then continued year after year to monitor the project and provide advice? Do they show us their credentialing every year that it's current and?
No, they have to stamp it.
And is that just a red, I, I, I don't know about governments, and I'm just, I'm wondering if, if, I know in private business that it's important to check credentialing licenses, make sure they're current and that stuff.
I'm sure these engineers would have to stamp it.
No, they, they don't, we don't, I mean, you've got to affirm that.
No, I, I, just a general question.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, we don't, unless there's, unless there's something about the fact that they're not following up and doing what the state is saying they have to do relative to tests and everything, you know? The answer's no, because the state, I know.
I wonder if the state, I wonder if the state's now has on their website, these are all the licensed vendors or something.
They probably, they probably have, you have to be a vendor, probably be qualified for the intercept.
So, so, so that it's there and, and, and anybody can know, so thank you, that's how it's going.
I can't remember the name of the company, it's something C, it's C and A out of. All right, we, we get the information?
The line is the number on the question.
Which line?
The.
So, that's all Mr. Dyer? And we were trying to understand one other thing about that. The actuals for oh six, oh seven are forty thousand five four two, the budget that year was forty-six thousand? How could it be so under budget? It's the same employee, and then why does it go up from eight thousand dollars from actuals? And then another, I just, so. You might have to answer, because you're only in here for six months of oh six, oh seven.
Right.
But we're trying to understand why that number is only forty thousand five four two versus around forty-six, cause then forty-eight makes sense. If someone goes on, like, you know, someone had significant surgery and was off for like two months or something, which I don't know if he was, but basically paid. Cause if you get disability, you pay it down, so they're making whole. So, that could be.
That's probably why, and I'm sure that the, the reason he was out with his knees is due to his works, you know, he went down, so he wasn't qualified for disability.
I just want, then, that, I think you guys should, we should understand that before we go to the budget committee, so, cause that's, you know, that's over two years, thirteen thousand dollar change, it looks like. So, what do we want to do about vehicle overtime if we've been under budget ahead?
Who's, do we have another, who's doing the vehicle overtime?
The only thing I can see is Bud Dyer. I checked. I think you need to check with Rick and just see what, what the, what the calls are. I mean, I understand if he gets called out in the middle of the night, but, you know, if he's plowing, that's one thing, but what, I'm, I've been told that it's not plowing. He's being, you know, when he's out plowing, he's being charged differently, but, I mean, overtime's overtime, so.
It would be overtime in the plowing budget.
Right. Right, but, but if, if a truck breaks down, he's in there on the repair of that vehicle, and that's what runs the overtime.
So, if a truck breaks down at night while they're plowing, he goes out there?
He goes out, trades out the vehicle, the one that needs to be repaired is brought in, the guy might jump into the other truck, and is out there, and he's on overtime as it relates to what his responsibility is.
He, he also gets a lot of calls from the PD when they have flat tires and that type of thing, because the police don't change tires, so he has to come in and do it. Or if they have a mechanical problem with their crews, they'll call him and do it.
Can we, I mean, okay. Either we budget better, or we try to manage it better. What would you like to do?
I, I think if, if this has been chronically underfunded, then we, we should just fund it because we're impacting the rest of the budget.
Yeah.
So, you know, if it's supposed to be something higher than that, let's, let's budget it to what we think it should be and see how it is and just monitor it through the course of the year, at least that's into the budget.
How many, how much, ten thousand dollars, how many hours does that represent approximately?
Yes. Here's a breakdown of the weekly charges so far this year.
What do you figure, about thirty dollars an hour in overtime?
Oh, I didn't, sorry, I was, I was thinking of something else, what are we trying, we're trying to figure out?
Chief mechanic rate is twenty-five, twenty-eight. Oh, thirty-eight bucks.
Thirty-eight bucks.
All right, so, okay, so there was ten hours overtime in July, first payroll period, there was about seven and a half, and the second period. Get to January, and there's sixty, seventy hours overtime.
It's got to be a plower.
Snowstorms.
Can I, can I take a stab at a suggestion? Can we, can we make it ten, so that we're closer to, I mean, it's still not covering what we've been expending in that amount, but as a compromise that we put it at ten and we try to manage that overtime a little bit more. I mean, it could be that it's a matter of the, like you said, the plowing is getting there, but if we could get more, if you can feel more comfortable about where that overtime is coming from. And then again, if you have to come back to us and say, actually, it is strictly this, and I would suggest that you increase it, but at this time, put it at ten.
Now, should it, if it's plowing, should the overtime go to golden?
It should if we become aware of it, or if it's wrong. By default, with the payroll system set up, any overtime that goes against the maintenance.
Because.
The department.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, but.
And when the department's only one person, it really sticks out.
Yeah, there's no reason, there's no reason there's eighty hours overtime in two week period.
But unless somebody tells us on the time sheet where some of it should be charged, we can't do that.
And also.
And that's what we have to manage it through, through Rick, that needs to be, actually going back first to Bud. Bud needs to allocate his time on the wage sheets.
So, that's, so my question then is, if we put ten thousand hours here and then they start doing it correctly next year, everybody's gonna be like, what's going on? We budgeted ten thousand, but we only spent six, but there's six thousand more. I, I just, but I, I.
So, if, right, if we get.
If you can figure out how much money.
Ask them.
Yeah, have a breakdown and figure out, okay, well, he actually does this much plowing, so we should be five thousand here and five thousand plowing.
That's per percentage cash and what percentage.
Right, and that's what I was, that's what I was suggesting, that we, that we get to follow it up. But my guess is it's gonna be somewhere in between, if he's gonna have some of that time. But so, does that mean that we pay the same? Does that mean that every time this employee plows, it's overtime?
One of the lines.
But my, my guess would be, if, if, I'm, I'm sure not everybody's paid as, as a, as a chief mechanic rate. So, we're gonna pay overtime for anyone to plow, should be paid, someone doesn't make as much per hour as he does, we've got to cut down the overtime cost. Do you know what I mean?
Kind of, but the advantage of this is, for example, like on my street during one of the snowstorms, sidewalk plow blew the hydraulics.
Oh, I can see if he's doing the technical.
But the thing is, then you call him in and it's a three-hour minimum. So, if he's already in plowing and has a problem, boom, he's available versus he comes in and fixes a fifteen minute, and it's only three hours. So.
Well, at that point, then you can put him on a plow for three hours. Do you know what I mean?
Right, but you need a plow going the whole time during the snowstorm, so you have somebody else in plowing, and then you have them sitting around. Yeah, I think that's the balance.
If we can, if you think you can get us the information, we can wait on this one, right?
Or we can, we can put it in there, and then when we communicate it to the budget committee, we say, this will need to be reallocated appropriately. And we think ten thousand dollars is right now.
Or, or you can just, if you wanna keep it simple, you can just simply put under the overtime line, the narrative, emergency calls and emergency snow plowing. You know, so, so that you know that this isn't just.
That's fine.
Maintenance work that he's doing.
And that includes the police department, I mean, you, you got some functional areas, right?
No, cause anytime he comes in to fix a vehicle for any department, it goes to this, goes to this vehicle overtime.
Yeah, cause.
If he was going out and arresting people, the overtime should go to police department.
I didn't wanna get into a lot of work around reality between cause centers.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of that.
I don't think that's.
Okay, so plus five thousand hours for vehicle overtime.
So, we're gonna bring it to ten, right?
Yes.
So, we'd go on to ten?
All right, we stalled at vehicle maintenance, and now we're gonna go to libraries.
Not even ten, I mean, you're getting.
Really, no one? Library? Is that being funny?
Oh, I thought it was.
This one needed a lot of work, I think.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure if we were able to get some of that stuff done. Eventually gets.
Me?
Yeah.
In the library room maybe?
Yes, yeah. Well, the question is to remind us, well, first of all, for salary adjustment line, it can be deleted to zero.
So, the six, seven, six, three, zero?
Yep, it is now zero. General supplies, I'm suggesting drop in to seven thousand.
I'd like to suggest five based on the year's actuals.
But I guess I wanted to make sure there was no misposting of oh five, oh six, oh seven expenses, cause she seemed kinda shocked that.
Right.
That, yeah.
I have five too, but I remember she was thinking that that, the date spent.
So, we're gonna drop the twelve to what? Five?
Oh, so we got to the current one, that's good.
Yeah, twenty-two, eighty-five.
What page are you on?
Uh, tenth, twenty-two, eighty-five, get it ready.
No, on the, Penny just gave us. Okay, so, what line is it?
Supplies.
Four eighty, two oh two. Yeah, she's only spent twenty-two percent to date.
That's why I'm thinking five, it's still, you know, comfortable.
Getting over that right through, not only spent twenty, twenty-three percent.
Yeah. I don't know how the library operates, I don't know when there's, you know, book purchases, all that kind of, I mean, this is just general supplies, though.
Yeah, it's general supplies.
This is paper.
And she spends thirty-eight hundred a year.
Damn. If she's good or gross, if she.
Okay, so the suggestion is to go to five?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so that's minus seven thousand, okay? The list of names is monsters, so long.
I have two thousand for library telephone. Because we've historically been budgeting this very large amount, and it's not meaning our expenditures.
Yeah, go with fifteen hundred, get a date, six sixty.
The year that last year was fourteen, twenty-one.
Library telephone, page sixty.
I think part of the oh six, oh seven was before we went on the.
Right.
That's just sales. All right, so, so telephone, we wanna move to what?
Um, I'm suggesting to Michael Orange, or Council of Orange is suggesting fifteen.
And your date has been?
Six sixty.
Six sixty.
Which is eight.
Okay, that's two fifteen. So, that's five thousand, six thousand and twenty hours savings.
We're going sixteen hundred on that one?
No, no, fifteen hundred.
Five, one five.
One five.
Okay.
It's also gonna go seven thousand electricity?
Yeah. You're going to seven thousand electricity?
Mm-hmm.
We're over the seven thousand, if, if you, this is just half the unit.
Well, this.
It's almost thirty-nine hundred.
This is going to, this includes January, so it includes seven months.
Yeah, it's through today.
Yeah, it's through today, I'm at eight thousand six hundred. It's not a big deal.
I wouldn't touch that, I mean.
I would keep it the same.
I would keep it the same. I won't cut that.
And see how it comes out.
And I also have questions that you were gonna, I'm just thinking, up before on page fifty-nine, that you were gonna look into the part-time salaries and the FICA.
Yeah, I wrote down need to check, and I circled ninety-one thousand, six sixty-six.
Yeah, and the nine thousand eighteen, I circled the same notes. Can I have eleven thousand right down?
What we're gonna have to do is when we're, when we're through, done making the changes, go back and look at all the FICA lines, make sure, and make sure that they're right based on any months. Any changes to the salary, we'll look at that at that point.
Okay. And then I have a question, as we were talking about, it got caught about during the veterans' request about the possible memorial going at the library. We were talking about who's, who maintains that property, and we had that conversation about the snow shuttling, and that they appear to have the money in this budget to do their snow shuttling. What about the cutting, the cutting in the grass of all of that, though, is still? What about the cutting, the cutting in the grass of all of that, though, still comes within the building and grounds, right?
I believe so. George, does building and grounds maintain the, the mowing of the grass around the, around the library?
I believe so.
I believe they do.
Yeah, definitely, I would think that they do.
They do all the top buildings, don't they?
All that.
Right, they would, so then I guess I wonder why the snow shuttling came in then?
Because in the past, it was always, it was done by one of the, by trustee's husband.
Oh, I see.
Well, he did.
So it was a new thing that they?
Yeah.
And so, since that walkway went in, the gardener's project a couple of years ago, the town plowed that, does that?
Right, plowing and shoveling is, that's something with the shoveling now, because we would shovel right out front here, but it's a path that needs to be shoveled, which we don't have. Paths, I mean, do we patch shovel the, the riverwalk?
Shovel the what?
Do we shovel the riverwalk or plow the riverwalk?
I don't.
No.
No, I don't think so.
No, so no real walkways, just entry ways. Okay.
But what, what they were doing is, is we've agreed that we would go down there and we'd do it, but we, and the sharing, it's just gonna be one of the last things that we do, so it may be that.
You want, you need to budget for it, got it. The last note I have is that we were just gonna check the price for gallons, um, for heating and oil, so that it was consistent.
Brian had mentioned wanting consistency to go up the, the budget for all of that.
Yeah, water and sewer needed to be revised, 'cause there's no, they're not separate bills. So my suggestion was just budget six hundred bucks. On which one?
No, you said to do both for twelve hundred. So six hundred each. I have both for twelve hundred. One line, both for twelve hundred. No, no, no.
They're already at five seventy, give it a day, done water.
How much are we?
Five seventy.
One line item for twelve hundred, I think is what it's supposed to be, meaning water and sewer.
That's fine.
Twenty-seven percent.
So I'm gonna cut sewer, six hundred bucks library.
Cut sewer totally out?
Yeah, 'cause it's one bill.
Oh, so we're doing the twelve hundred? For both, okay. Well, that's what I said.
Books and subscriptions, I was suggesting dropping it by twenty-five hundred.
Should be removed that line item, library sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the one above it should say water and sewer.
I mean, unless you're, unless you're looking at the bill and dividing it out, but it doesn't, it doesn't help us to accept the numbers. Okay, so books and subscriptions, I was suggesting cutting twenty-five hundred dollars, 'cause they were requesting a five thousand dollar increase and. Figured a little bit more gradual increase of capacity.
Eight, fourteen, six.
What were you suggesting us?
Thirty-seven five.
I think we should go level with it.
Last year it's like a thirty-five. Books and subscriptions. Books and subscriptions. We haven't come up with a number yet. What do people, what, what did Rosie and Mike wanna do?
I see your date is almost fifteen thousand.
Even if I moved from last year's. Thirty-five.
Okay. Okay. So we're keeping it at thirty-five thousand. Promotion, uh, this was a mistake, it's actually income, so it should be cut out altogether. If you'd like to do that a couple more times, that'd be fine, to have things that we can cut out that don't really impact anything. All right, are we ready to move on?
We're not gonna do anything to program, library program.
We just did, I think.
Promotion, I thought, is what we did.
Promotion.
Oh, right.
Promotion was the one that was wrong.
Yeah.
Library programs is at two thousand.
You get a date to ten.
The reason why I was, I initially had to cut it and then when I asked her, it's because they wanna add additional adult education program.
Which one is that? They're talking about programs, library programs.
Last year, 'cause I asked what the jump was, 'cause it's a twice the amount, she said it was because they wanna add an adult educational program. Programs actually.
Keep it at two thousand or reduce it? Mike? Sixty-one.
Did you want it for what, adult programs?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen hundred.
Is fifteen hundred okay?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest keeping it, but just add the narrative, what you, what the purpose is.
It's one of the, one of the things that.
You know.
I would keep it.
Okay, we're gonna keep it at two thousand now. Who will move on this budget? Yeah, go ahead, you still have more questions. I don't have anything else. Can we just run through, you said salary adjustment is zero? Just set, yep. And then we ran over it. Um, general supply, they have five thousand. Telephone is fifteen hundred. Electricity is seven thousand.
No, it's not.
No.
I got beat to it, it's seven thousand five hundred, they're keeping this.
He ran seventy-five hundred, okay. Thank you. I have, the sewer is zero? Yep. The library book subscription is thirty-five thousand. Promotion is zero? Yep. That all? Yep. Okay.
And you're gonna remove the sewer line and, and make it a water and sewer line.
Yep.
And then I have like the library equipment maintenance and the computer contractor, capital reserve. Before we go.
That's just the copier.
Okay.
Yeah. I understand that to be the copier.
It's a copy and contract.
Not some here. Wasn't there some discussion too about the equipment purchase and the outside book drop? Yeah.
Yep.
That, the outside book drop was a thousand.
Five hundred, I mean, no, two thousand.
Two thousand.
Well, the, the reference stack is two thousand.
Right, and the outside book drop was a thousand.
I was suggesting, yeah, I, I thought the outside book drop was not really necessary.
The, the fifteen hundred from this year, they haven't even touched. So they could, in essence, buy an outside book drop this year.
They could.
Unless they have that M I.
I think that's for a computer.
Yeah.
Based on the amount for last year's.
I don't, I, I don't know if their insurance would change too, didn't she mention something about the insurance premiums and all that? She did something like that, it would be safer?
It's on our, our insurance, no.
That wouldn't affect our insurance?
Yeah, she was just saying, so if we took the cell and put the book drop and brought it down to five.
Is that a sus, a possible suggestion?
We have that already. It was a suggestion, but I think there might be additional if we look at what their, the previous.
Equipment purchase last year was, was requested at thirty-five hundred, which would have been two new computers for two thousand dollars, shelving for a thousand and a work table for five hundred bucks.
That was last year?
Yeah, and we cut to fifteen hundred. Yeah, we did.
Transfer the money, she won't have the money?
She can't transfer a fund yet.
Right, let, let's just make the decision about what we wanna put here, I'm sorry. I'd like to make it five thousand.
I agree.
And, you know, she has fifteen hundred bucks this year, she was gonna buy a computer with it, I guess.
But she'll buy an outside book drop.
Yeah, she'll have the priority, that's, the other thing with the drop, I'm not worried about terrorism.
On that book drop.
Agreed.
But you said, I think.
And it's not like a really good place to put it, for people to drive by.
Right.
Yeah.
And she also said it would be two thousand for the book drop, that was what they had written down. Yeah, all right. So six to five?
Yep. Okay. Grants. All right, so this is, my suggestions that I outlined in the spreadsheet were a weak and soft, kind of structuring of how we do this. To make it consistent with past years, so the grants old home line should be re-titled to what it was previously, it was grants festivals. And basically, I was suggesting to round it off to thirteen thousand five hundred, which I don't really care if, I don't wanna do that. And keep at the same amount, because that would be five thousand to the heritage festival, Main Street, and the same figure we got last year to the old home weekend. And then you cut the Main Street five thousand at the bottom, 'cause it's now in the festivals line, which is how it has been done in the past. And the grants Main Street, which is at the bottom of page forty-nine, used to be the Veterans Memorial Trust, that's what it currently is called. That's what that six thousand dollars was, according to my last year budget. And so that's, that becomes a question to be about whatever it's.
Except the page, there's veterans, six thousand.
Right, but it's got zero in it.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, so on the bottom, it says grants Main Street, is, is, that's the veterans? Is that what you said?
Yes, so the bottom of page forty-nine, grants Main Street, that category of budget number, last year, we had it as Veterans Memorial Trust.
And we wanna go back to that.
We should just keep it consistent, yeah.
Okay.
Remember last year, you opened up a spreadsheet, it's a number that didn't necessarily match.
So this is probably the right number.
This was the right description that was in the, in the computer system.
So the count for the veterans is really the eight twenty?
I mean, you can use this for the veterans, this is, this has been the veterans' line, but the description was something else in, in the spreadsheet you were working on.
So count eight eighteen, cross out the word Main Street, put veterans, and put.
Well, we need to discuss what, if they should get six thousand or zero, or if it's not really, if it's a grant.
Right, that, this was one that the, the council, when we were talking about the CIP, probably moving this six to put it with this ten that they're getting in the CIP, so that they can do their memorial and then the van scene when they get around to doing that. That was, that was something.
It's not the CIP, it's. Could you? Well, is it the CIP or is it expendable trust or?
Well, it's CIP, it was, it can be a capital reserve or it can be expendable maintenance trust, either way.
Should?
Should town authorized committees, commissions be in grants?
That's what I mean.
I don't think they should even be in grants. And we have another commission that has recently requested money as well, advisory heritage. Where, where would we put it if we took that at grants?
Well, let's, let's answer, let's, um, first, let's figure out if there's any changes to any of the numbers in here. And then we'll figure out what number we wanna give the veterans and where it should go. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
I think so.
I don't think there's any change, I mean, I'm fine if we keep it level upon the thirteen thousand four sixty-five for, and we name it festivals. And then split out the same way it has been in the past. Five thousand for the Main Street, Heritage Festival, the other number for.
Eight thousand, which is a couple hundred bucks more than they got last year.
Yeah.
So they'll be.
I was trying to help a little bit.
So old home will get eight one three five and Main Street?
No, old home will get eight four six five.
Eight four six five. And then they just give eight thousand five hundred? Heritage?
That's not on the spreadsheet. So the, the description, the text could say five thousand Main Street. So if we wanted to, I mean, if the Veterans Memorial wants some funds, then maybe it should be, um, going to the expendable trust or whatever it's called. But if they're gonna use it to pay for videotaping, that's not a, that's not really a capital thing. And it's not really maintenance of the memorial, which is what that fund was created for. So if we wanna provide money for that kind of expense, it should probably be a line of buildings and grounds or something.
The ten thousand portion. Why would it be buildings?
Cause it's a building or grounds.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the taping of their.
Well, I, I don't know where to put it, it just should.
But if they're talking about the taping of their thing, then it should be at, that we should consider that when we are talking about the channel thirteen. And the hours, then we should just, if that's something that we want, we should go back to that section and say, align them, say, to include the, the, um, the projects that the veterans committee is currently doing.
Good, I had a conversation with, with Doug about that today. You know, he says, I only have a limited budget. And they want, they've got something like eighty individuals that they wanna tape. You know, it's like, cool. And I said, it's up to you to decide how often you're going to do taping with them, you know, you might say one Sunday a month and. I had heard said that the, the taping proposal is first for World War II veterans. And there's no way there's eighty.
I don't think there's a lot of thirty.
But then the email I got recently was talking about being on vets and serving all vets. I'm not opposed to it, like, we have to do some kind of organization.
Turn something creep.
Mission creep, yeah.
Is it, is it thirty or eighty? You heard thirty, Mike?
I'm checking my notes.
I think what we, do we all agree it doesn't belong in this?
Right.
Part of the budget? Right.
It doesn't belong in channel thirteen either.
No, I don't think that we should be asking them a specific one in channel thirteen, I think this is where, there was a discussion with me about, well, is it okay? For the limited purpose of it, yeah, but now it's like growing and.
Expeditions.
Right now, channel thirteen is a government education channel, not a, so I'm not sure if that is as close to that mission as, as I. We have to, you know, I, I realize that we can't broadcast more, but we really need to. May, maybe make it a full-time profession for the town to have a nice TV channel. Sure if we can afford that.
I have, my notes said it'd be thirty more, roughly thirty more.
Oh, okay.
And she's doing them with like groups of four? And how long is she taping for?
Well, I'm, I'm getting notes that it's estimated to be a ten-hour deal for a taping.
So she needs an additional ten hours.
So that's just, you know, per group of four, right?
Well, it's just listed here that it takes ten hours for a taping.
For a taping.
A taping.
I think maybe we should just cap it at a certain amount, and if they wanna do open above that, we could do some fundraising or something to, to get the extra money.
But we're still down to, where do we, where do we put this?
So we're removing six thousand out of this category. We're gonna put some number somewhere else to support, whether it's taping or repolishing plaques or painting, whatever.
Do you want to do it that way, or should that come to, through the expendable trust?
I can't remember, I'd have to read what the expendable trust purpose was, which I guess we have somewhere here, because. Do you, do you have a resolution?
Could we, could we do a separate section for committee commission requests?
You could, but how are you gonna allocate it? How does that, you know, what if somebody comes in and they use up, what they have five thousand dollars, somebody who's, you know, one, they get aggressive and they, and they use four thousand of it and. No, you're saying within that, you'd have an advisory.
Within that, you'd have veterans' trust, advisory heritage, those are the two I know of this year that have asked for money. You know, you'd have separate line items for each committee commission.
Yeah.
That would request money. And I think that would put it into a group where we can track it, um, and, and provide a more correct place to put it.
I think that's what they do with the recreational, the, the, all four went into one, one request that comes forward and then that group takes care of. one, one request that comes forward and then that group takes care of it. Yeah, we have a system and it moves through, but I, you know, I wouldn't want to create something that was difficult.
Is that a dual bullseye?
Pardon?
Anything's gold. But look at, Jason, would you ask me for all what's on the Grants page anyway? Yeah, we just don't think, it's not a grant.
But it's not really a grant.
It's not an outside organization. What do you want to call it?
It's operating funds. That's, well, I'm looking at what Advisory Heritage asked for. They're looking for postage to do mailings, I can't remember the end of the specifics.
Well, the town, I think is probably, probably going to do the mailings, but just, you know, if we have to do any grants or any technical assistance to get regulations developed and implemented and.
Okay, so I just want someone to put up a proposal for how to address this problem.
We have two problems. We have the problem of the veterans wanting money to do more filming on Channel thirteen, which I think is separate from wanting money to do building maintenance on town-owned property. So my suggestion is that we have doubled the Channel thirteen budget this year, and that we have some kind of system set up that if you're, if people kind of know in advance what they want to do for the month, that that goes to the Channel thirteen committee or that it goes to you, and that we just, we, we have a plan for what we're going to be able to budget and what we're going to plan to videotape within that budget.
I agree.
So they would make a request to Channel thirteen committee and say, this is what we'd like to broadcast, and then the Channel thirteen committee looks at that and with consulting with you, comes up for how we're going to spend that budget. Would be my suggestion.
Jen, that's very good because.
It's no good?
The last, the last, the last Channel thirteen meeting, we actually started to set up a subcommittee to actually review requests, the slides, and review programming. And it's going to be a subcommittee of three people that will meet once a week, they're obviously going to be very short meetings, and go through the requests that are there and say yea or nay.
So are we all set on, can we, does everyone agree with that piece of it?
And request for, for Chris to go out and videotape something could actually be included in that, in that way, the operating, the Channel thirteen operating committee can help manage his hours.
I think that when the committee gets that idea finalized, then you need to come back to the council and.
Okay.
And the council to bless it and say, you have the authority to do that.
Okay.
Versus, yes, just make it all clear so everybody's in the same place.
Right.
Wake up and suddenly finally have.
Because there'd be some kind of criteria as to.
Yeah, you'd have to have criteria.
Yes, exactly.
But that's great, I think that's good, you're stepping in the right direction.
So then the next would be, they're looking for money for the renovations of the bandstand, painting and maintenance of that.
Which is in the CIP.
Which is in the CIP.
Because the, the trust fund that we created is to create and maintain.
Correct.
The memorials.
The memorials.
So we're set.
Of which the bandstand is.
In some ways you could say videotaping is making a living memorial, or memorializing those who are alive. But it's not what it can be anticipated, what we created. But that would be a question for the council to discuss at the time a request comes forward.
Yeah, and, and that was the discussion that, that was had last night about the repairs to the bandstand. And our first, the first conversation I had, we're going to move forward with it, but then, and we talked about it, it's not a good location for us to be working on the bandstand at this point in time with the traffic flow and, and everything else that's going on, so pushed it off, so they can accrue some additional money and then put it out to bid and from there move forward, but us looking at what they want to do of the.
So, I mean, I think it might make sense to budget a little bit of money for a training or some miscellaneous expenses that they come up with that aren't really appropriate for the trust fund, and then put some more money, whatever more money we decide, in the CIP to go over to the trust fund to help. I'm not sure what that number is.
It might not, based, based on some conversations I've had, it might not be a bad idea to kind of give that committee a timeline as to when, you know, they could do the bandstand specifically, you know, dates, you know, we know you don't want to do it during the downtown because that would, you know, you're not going to paint it and have all the dust and everything flying. You know, is it something that can be done in oh-eight, or is it realistically something that should be done in oh-nine, realizing that chances are Verizon and a few other people may have to come back anyway at the beginning of all that?
But that's all underground one.
Yeah, so, you know, if, if we could, if somehow they could get a timeline as to when you anticipate that they could do this project, this project, you know, whatever they've got going on, I think that would be very helpful for them. As, as far as being able to know when they need their money, what they need to budget for, when they need to start getting.
I would plan on, if I was the committee, I would expect that they would be putting it out to bid with the council in late spring of oh-nine and painting it in the summer of oh-nine.
And that's fine, but I, I think if, if you can give them that kind of a timeline, I think right now they don't, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
People talk in budget seasons, you know, oh-eight, oh-nine session, you get confused as to when things are available, you know, certain funds and everything. So I think that if we, if a timeline could be drawn for them, it would probably help the whole committee understand it a whole lot better.
All right, my suggestion is that in the town council budget, we put in a line item that says supportive committees or something like that, and we put in.
That's a good place for it.
Certain amount of money for this committee and a certain amount of money for another committee that we requested if we decide that.
Make it down to that committee?
Yes. That would be my suggestion, just to put it somewhere without creating a new budget category.
So for all fairness, can we put, we put amount in there for committees? Because what's going to happen is now that committees are aware that they can ask for money, they're going to. So could we put a line item in there that just says for town, for town appoint committees, and then they would submit a request to us for expenditures from that, and we would, we would make those.
Yeah.
Instead of saying five hundred for this one, five hundred for that one.
Now, did Janice come to us telling, asking for money to stop this taping? How did that come about?
To continue? I believe she has been taping now.
I know, but how did that start?
I think they, what they did is they determined they wanted to do the project, and I believe they either talked to Doug, or certainly went and had a conversation with Doug, I'm not sure, and, and from there set it up to have Chris do the work.
Right. I think that, there was definitely an email to me, and I said, that's a town miniature decision about how that resource gets allocated, you know, so.
And as I say to Doug today is that, you know, he goes, he, I, he saying, I only have so much dollars left, I said, Doug, do you decide what's going to happen at this point?
If there's questions or want to further discuss that, we need to do that separately from the side.
No, I just, I didn't know if there was a procedure already in place to.
Well, I mean, we prioritize council meetings, planning board, while school work within the time that the school pays their budget, and then other ones as possible.
Course.
Okay. So we made it pretty clear.
So my suggestion would be on that, under the town council, that we reduce the town council contingency to six thousand, use that extra thousand to create a new line item that says supportive town, of, of town.
Commissions and committees.
Yeah. Funds, commissions and committees.
So we're going to put a thousand in there, that was your suggestion?
Right, so that we're not increasing the budget. So take a thousand from our contingency, but make it clear that we have a thousand in there for committees, because we also, we already added another thousand for training the town council.
Okay, that works for me. I have your pencils over there, so somebody can.
On the Grants, New Mark Pantub Association.
Yeah.
Request is engine house heating and repairs. That's already budgeted for in the land grounds.
It is?
I believe so. It's a third, county has suspended, page six.
Contingency's done.
Yep. Can we use a thousand?
Handtub.
Ten thousand.
Pantub, engine house repairs, four hundred bucks.
Where'd you see it, Mike?
Page six of the county has expanded this.
I'm sorry. Pantub.
Okay, the issue is.
You're saying it's already, it's in our budget somewhere else too?
Buildings, yes, fourth floor, three oh three oh one seven oh, Eaton Oil Pantub, four hundred.
Right, right, that's the maintenance of that building and?
No, it says Eaton Oil.
Right, no, I know, but this is, this two thousand dollars is for an actual repair of the heating system, of the engine house heating system. It says, request engine house heating and repairs. It's, because I have it circled, I think it's an actual repair to that heating system, I believe.
But that's, it's a town-owned building anyway. Are you saying we use the capital reserve fund for building maintenance that we have?
Or the operating budget for repairs. I mean, the Pantub Association, previously they had a box was for them to go and do the musters.
Right.
So I, I agree, we shouldn't be granting the association money and spending on that building.
Right.
We have four hundred bucks, Mike pointed out, we have four hundred bucks budgeted for Pantub oil and heat. We have four hundred bucks budgeted for maintenance.
Oh, so you think it's doubled?
It might be, or if there's a specific repair, then.
Then we need to add that four hundred dollars.
We need to hear what it is, or you all do it, right, guys. So cutting that to eight hundred bucks?
Yes.
So we cut the two thousand to eight hundred?
Yes. Which would just be the muster.
It's freezing.
Some will create a few more.
And I, are we going to work on the advisory twenty five hundred?
Well, are we done with Grants? Because Advisory Heritage wouldn't be a grant.
Okay.
No, they'll do that in the.
Budgets.
Budget.
That we only have a thousand dollars.
Here's the, we haven't scheduled back now.
Twenty five hundred.
So, so the long conversation.
Yeah, we did have, okay.
I had the words, I'm sorry.
We're going to talk about it again next Monday.
We do?
Yeah, I have another meeting next Wednesday, too.
So, okay, well, while we're just talking about this stuff, there's an address request that came in late from the Advisory Heritage. They're trying to talk about lots, so what do we want to do?
Just, are we, sorry.
We have to do downtown tip and then capital approval. Do you have the email?
Look at the bond schedule. You looked at it, did I? I'll do it right now.
We are expecting the principles to be one point two.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just looking at the tax, tax rate impact, that's all.
The email from the Advisory Heritage.
Probably.
Do you guys have a specific breakdown of how the financials figured out?
No, I just, I talked to Phil and he said, just for regulation development implementation, if we need any speakers at any of the meetings, we're going to hope for educational purposes for the people in the district and any type of technical, technical assistance that we're going to need.
Is that what, were you at the meeting, which councillors were, it says councillors that were at the meeting assured us this request could be handled. Were you at the?
Data and Agatha, yeah.
Oh, okay. So the commit, so are there minutes from that meeting or that, it's just, where they broke, where they had a budget that they broke down that said speaker might cost this much or this might?
Yeah, because why would we need to pay speakers?
Uh, because.
Store of resources.
Yeah, but, but Phil did, Phil wasn't sure if, if all the speakers we needed, we could use that resource or not, we'd have to get something from the outside.
So my, my suggestion, what is your suggestion on this?
They thought that twenty five hundred, we'd be able to do it.
Right, is that your suggestion?
From, from the Advisory Heritage.
Right, no, but as a councillor, as a councillor, what are you suggesting we do about this?
Well, it, it would, you'd want it to fall under the category that we just started, under the, the council, the council budget, and we only have a thousand in that. I'd, I'd like to see it funded, because it's something that we've been waiting on for the downtown area, and we've been asked to, to do some work on it.
Mailings would only be, not that much money, I mean, a couple hundred bucks for mailings. I'm not in support of paying for a speaker to come before we actually adopted it or.
Down here with the town, we have a cost of mailing. We're going to get the letter of.
Base also cost of getting the letter typed and printed.
Mm-hmm. Refine the existing maps, we had pro bono, who's the chair of planning, I don't think it was named.
Robin.
Robin did that, but, you know, hopefully you'll be able to continue doing that.
Hopefully Diane can do it.
Yeah, and, you know, to get all those done up in color and everything, and to get those sent out, I, I mean, you know, it can be a pretty expensive deal.
I guess I'm more comfortable with giving the full amount without a breakdown, so later the process.
My, my suggestion would be that we've, that we've now formed an account for that in the budget, and that we actually get requests when they, when they come in, like, a more formal breakdown, I mean, people, I don't know, just hearing now, there's not a real clear understanding of how much money goes where and what it's for. So we can just get a breakdown of that, and then we could, we could make a decision as a full council, and it would come out of that.
Can we, can we put that money in that fund so that we have it if we, in the future, request comes in, we say, yeah, let's go for it, so the money is there?
I'm going to handle that the same way I handled the rest of the budget. If I don't have a breakdown of where the money's going, I have a hard time budget.
Right, but if there's not enough in the, what we've allocated from the council to put into that, that new section, a thousand dollars.
Right.
If, if, if they contemplate needing twenty five hundred, and we come back before you with the breakdown that justifies twenty five hundred, where would we get that, that difference in amount of money?
I would say you're not going to be doing color mailings.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's an expensive thing in general, and we're paying for speakers. It's, that's why it's hard, you mean, you're asking it to put in the full amount, but we don't know what it's for. That's how I feel. But I'm not going to shut up.
But it would, it would also, putting that amount in there, if Advisory Heritage comes back to the council and says, okay, we do this, this and this for twenty five hundred dollars, and the council says, well, let's go to black and white rather than color, so that will reduce your cost by, I'm just going to throw it out, figure out, by a thousand dollars, we'll approve the fifteen hundred. Then X, Y, Z committee comes along and says, well, we need five hundred dollars for this, and the council puts it, that money is there.
We haven't had this problem before, so with committees requesting money.
Well, it's starting to get to the point where committees are starting to ask for money.
Okay, okay, you guys, we've talked, it's time for Mike because we got a stalemate about it, so let's try and, it's okay.
I, I guess, my first question is, I understand that we, we have our contingency funds still in place, if, if one of the committees were to come with us, come to us and we've taken away the thousand dollars and we spent the thousand dollars, would we be able to say, yes, this is justifiable, we could take it out of the contingency if we still in fact had it? So I mean, it's not like we're actually closing the door, we're just, you know, I guess, you're going to get it, you've got to get it from someplace, so if you're going to, if you're going to request twenty five hundred dollars more, chances are we're going to take it out of the contingency fund right now, and I'm not comfortable doing that. But if, if you're going to come back and say, yeah, it's going to cost us eight hundred dollars for the mailing, or, or whatever, you know, then we can take a look at it, see if it's something that.
It's justifiable.
The council feels, you know, is, is proper to do, then, then we can support it. But I, you know, to just actually put a line item, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that at this point, because, you know, you've got your other committees out there, like, you know, the Fire and Fire Committee, the Highway Public Safety Committee, I mean, none of those. those are funded. We're not ask, you know, I'm on both of them, don't recall us asking for anything. You know, so at this point, I'd, I'd feel comfortable to just say, you know, bring a representative to the council, get on the agenda, and tell us what you need, and we can go from there on a boat.
That sounds good. That sounds good. It's fair enough. I mean, I think, I think, I think these certain committees, like the veterans and the advisory heritage, are just getting to the point where they're ready to take that next step. And that next step includes the necessity of having some funding.
Right, but I think in clear conscience, you've got to take a look, and you've got to say, you know.
Oh, definitely. We have to justify what we need.
Cut. I mean, we, we need to justify the expenditures, however small they are. I mean, we were in here taking eighty dollars from one line item tonight. You know, I mean, what's eighty dollars? Well, it's eighty dollars. So, you know, I think we've got to be careful what we designate for actual spending at this point. If it comes up, let's see if we can find it. If we've got it, we'll do it.
But I mean, Brian had mentioned, you know, we never had this problem before, but I just wanted to, you know, make note that these committees are just getting to a point where it's ready for the next step. And that's why we're starting to see these requests for funding from these different committees. But that sounds like a good alternative.
Because each one of those next steps needs to be approved by the council.
By the council anyways.
So that way, when that comes up, we need by approving it, we're saying, we have a way to fund it.
Yep. And everybody's surprised at exactly what's going on, which is good, too.
Frank, can we pick up by?
Sure. I don't even know how many.
Well, you don't want to know.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. So do you have an hour to have time? He said eight o'clock, we were going to be out.